Okay. At this time, I would like to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May 16th, 2017 City of Ione City Council Meeting. The City of Ione Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council Meeting. The City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. At this time, we will move with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, the call for roll call.
Councilmember Emerson.
Here.
Councilmember Reed. Councilmember Simon. Vice Mayor Rapp.
Here.
And Mayor Rapp.
Here. I M C, closed session, will be at the end of the meeting. Item D is approval of the agenda.
And I'd like to make a motion that you put public comment ahead of the other items so that we can allow all of the other comments.
Do we want to do all of the public comment or just a certain item?
Well, since you're having public comment, you might as well.
Microphone, please.
So I've got a motion to move public comment up and to ahead of presentations. Got a motion second all as a favor. Okay, at this time, first of all, I'd like to welcome everyone to the council meeting. And if you've ever come to our council meetings before, you'll know that they're always orderly and civilly run, and like we hope to continue now this evening. We'll give people plenty of opportunity to speak. There is a four-minute limit. Hopefully, you won't need four minutes to make your point, but there is a four-minute limit there. And so at this time, I will open up for public comment. And this is for items not on the agenda. Okay, stand down.
My name is Mike Lake, 707 Heath Drive, Ione, California, 37 years. Recent events happened at this last homecoming that has caused some controversy that I and I feel many other people have think that is a little bit overboard. The impression that I got was that they were going to address the City Council tonight. I guess they're not. But the idea of them addressing the City Council and what you guys have to do with the Ione Picnic Association and Homecoming, there's only two things they can achieve by doing this, and asking for permission or an apology for the City Council. Is either one revoke the permit to have a parade for the Ione Homecoming that's been going on for 114 years, 141 years? Or force the Ione Picnic Association to prejudge every float and entry that is in the fair, in the hopes that it's not offensive to anyone. Now, there was one, not entry, but things that anybody that's been here for any amount of time, Chuck and Mike went through, like they always do, every year. And I think they are, this year, the victims of crybullying, political correctness, and a group that wants to force us to not express our artistic creation, like they have done. I've been here for 37 years at Homecoming. I cannot not remember them doing it. Of course, I was young in the first couple ones. The second deal that can come from that is, okay, who's going to judge who can go in the parade and who can't? A Muslim person may take offense at the dance group. Animal lovers, peta, may take offense at the horses that are bound and drawn, beast of burden, the goats that are in the cages. So then, we've just become, we're just not going to have it. You cannot let, yeah, sorry, I'm going to move on from that. Frogs too. This is purely bullying and political correctness that has woken the town up. And God love our town, God love the Paloms. They need Homecoming to me. Mike is at a... Mike is at a Native Sons convention in Santa Barbara or somewhere. Chucky's here. And the mask that supposedly had bullet holes in it. Everybody with names that had bullet holes in it on the other side or on the complaining side, obviously not true. I just hope you don't jump to conclusions and start to censure the free expression of the citizens of Ione that vote and have experienced this for 141 years.
Thank you. My name is Jerry McCarthy. I live at 1114 West Marles Street. And yes, I wrote it down and in paper. I was hoping that the person who started this whole firestorm would have been here so they could respond to them. That's what I'm prepared to do. But absent their appearance, unless I would give them the podium first if they're still here.
Are they here?
Are they here? I see them out here, so I'm going to go ahead and read my rebuttal.
I'll take it.
I am Scott Williams. I live at 308 Washington. Been in Ione about 10 years. I've been the mother lode since late 70s. My kids were both, went to Calabas High, and so I'm a little familiar with this area. I think that the controversy concerns the appropriateness of that particular parade entry for children.
What about the cursing from the offender?
Okay, please, just keep it civil. You can have a chance.
I apologize.
I believe it was an unauthorized entry. And if that's the case, then anybody who wants to come into the parade would have that right.
They've been doing it for over 40 years.
Please, mark speaker at time. Thank you very much. You all have your opportunity to speak, please.
I wasn't at the parade. I was at last night's special school board meeting concerning serious, ongoing, generational issues of bullying. Bullying based on race, bullying race based on religion, bullying based on sex. From my 70 years, I found that the two instances, the parade entry and the meeting of the school board, happening within two days of each other, was somewhat of a shocking occurrence. I believe they're related. I think that as a community, we need to be more sensitive to issues of race, issues of gender identity, issues of religion. So that's why I think my daughter got a little bit unhappy about that particular entry. I must admit, Facebook kind of drove this thing crazy. So you know what? That's all I have to say. You know, I understand where you all folks are from, but you know, thanks for at least hearing me out.
Thank you very much for your comment. Wait for your turn at the mic. Thank you.
All right, so to the gentleman that just spoke and the people he represents, I'm going to give him a lesson in tolerance. I'm City Council members of the public. I am a multi-generational resident of Ione, attended Ione High School, and raised my children in Ione. I have attended and participated in the Ione Homecoming, especially the parade, for nearly 50 years. Throughout that time, I watched, enjoyed, and participated in satirical skits during the parade. Satire is defined as the use of humor, irony, exaggeration, or ridicule to expose and criticize people's stupidity or biases, particularly in the context of contemporary politics and other issues. A TV News 13 Insta poll just today, prior to the meeting, reported that 83% of the viewers agreed it was satire, while only 17% found it offensive. It's my understanding that we are gathered here tonight to comment on this matter because of the hypersensitivities of a very intolerant few who felt compelled to make this a national crisis. I also understand that the main antagonist is a recent transplant to Ione and recently lost a bid for a seat on the Amador County Board Supervisors. I can only thank God that that person lost, because I am in the majority who saw this skit as satire. The antagonist is one of the 17% who were offended. To that person, I ask, where is your animated offenses when watching Saturday Night Live, late-night talk shows, and violent protests in Berkeley? I strongly urge the City Council to abstain from witting into what is arguably a First Amendment issue. Demonstrate leadership by displaying tolerance for satire, whether you personally agree with it or not. And to the persons or persons who were offended, I say, get over it. Put on your big-boy pants or your big-girl pants and take note. Life is not fair, and when things are going your way, look around for inspiration and how to act when they don't. Because here's what is arguably one of the most conservative counties in California. Many of the people who you hope to have as good neighbors practice tolerance, good manners, maturity, and restraint during a political cycle that the majority of Ione residents did not agree with. This exercise in civil decorum continues at the state level. I say to you antagonists, if this parade offends you, just stick around. You ain't seen nothing yet. Also, if it's your aim to assimilate and become a member of this community, just remember, it was great before you got here.
I'm Mitzi Windley. I'm the president of IPA. We have several different divisions. I have had phone calls, I have been hung up on, I have answered my secretary's phone, Lacy. We ask for their name. What's your name? What's your name? They scream at us, they hang up. I am just curious what happened to the First Amendment and freedom of speech and expression. The majority of the people here are in support of the parade and its traditions. Would you please raise your hand, who's here in support? Okay? So I am just appalled that this has taken up so much of our time and a waste of time. We have spent endless hours of volunteer work to do the parade, to do the fireworks, to raise money, and these people, all they have to do is complain. And it makes me very, very sad. And again, what's with the First Amendment? Thank you.
Any other public comment on the parade, please? Do you want to flip for it?
No, no. My name's Larry Ainger. My house is 17 Plymouth Highway here in town. I'm an Ione lifer and proud of it. And I will tell you right now that when I grew up here, I was a victim of bullying. And one of the bullies I had was Chuck Bonham. Seriously. I got tired of it one day on the playground, and we were in a tussle. Five minutes later, it was done, and we sat in Robert Rogers Jr.'s office at lunch, afraid for what was going to happen. Were we going to get paddled, or were we going to get our parents called? Well, he came into the office and said, "What are you doing in here? Get out of here, I don't want to see you again." Since then, we've been good friends. I want to tell you personally, even though I'm not a victim, I'm a survivor. I have thick skin. I gained respect to the people that I clobbered afterwards. Many of us became good friends. I gained character, and I'm stronger for it. If I wouldn't have been bullied, maybe I would be in the back room with a little mousy voice, but here I am, supporting a person that bullied me way back when. Through the years, it's always been my pleasure to see Chuck, Mike, the Bonham family go through the parade. One time, about 20 years ago, one of the affiliated groups came down the street as a pope, followed by Father Relahan in a red convertible, loving it. Well, if you have thick skin, so can I, and so should everyone else. Thank you very much. Do I have to use the microphone? I'm just trying to figure out how to address everybody here. So, I don't know, because I'm sorry, my name is Matthew Mick.
Thank you.
I don't do the social media, face page stuff and all that. I don't, I'm not too savvy that much. How about now? But from what I heard, it was an issue on the fact that we concealed ourselves. For those of you who don't know, I was Donald Trump. I brought my dog to prove it, just in case. The, kind of piggyback on everything else, this was not a racially motivated thing whatsoever, not even in the little, like nothing was racially motivated. This was a funny coup of just what's happening in society today. It's really not that big of a deal. And for those of you who are offended by it, I take offense by you from what was posted and what was made to me. The people that posted negative things about this town, who I might say has embraced me in the last 10 years, and I do come from a small town, but this town right here has embraced me with open arms and love. It's just been absolutely joy to live and work here. This, this little, with lack of a better, BS, is frightening. And for those of you who think that it isn't, you should be ashamed of yourselves. For those of you that live here and have lived here for years and years and years, be proud of yourselves. Be proud. Do not let this type of little thing come between our community. It was nothing but a joke, and it's funny. That's it. And I'll promise you this, next year, in light of this little action that however got put together, next year will be better.
Is there any other public comment on the parade, please?
There is one.
Everybody will have their chat.
Good evening. My name is Noel Richmond. I'm a resident of Ione and have been for a long time, since I was five years old, minus a few years in college. First of all, I would really like to take this public forum to thank the Picnic Association members. It's a very thankless job. I know there's people on the council that have been involved in Homecoming. There's a lot of people in this room that have been involved in Homecoming. And it is a lot of hours and a lot of time that has taken to put one of the longest continually running city celebrations in the state of California on. And Mitzi and Lacy, especially in light of this year, deserve a lot of thanks. Jerry McCarthy stole a little bit of my thunder, but you know, free speech is constitutional right. It's a privilege that we have. And when you try to stifle that speech because you don't agree with it, it's a very slippery slope into censorship. And I think that we have to be very careful, just like you said. It's going to be very difficult if the IPA, if the people that have been involved, I you know, I backed out this year, but I've been involved for the last 19 years in IPA, helping to put on, there's a lot of people in this room. I see Andrea, I see Eva and Arlene and Lori and Richard, who ran it, and you know, probably half the people in this room are in the hallway. And I think that we need to be very careful, because what you're going to do is we're going to lose this celebration. We're going to lose part of the identity of what Ione is if we allow this censorship to continue, regardless of what it is. Because if we're worried about what's offensive to everyone, if we have a church group walking through, and we have an atheist that's in the parade and they're offended, do we not allow those kids to walk through? Do we not allow them to have booths at Homecoming to fundraise? I think that we need to be very careful, and I understand, and I respect the, I respect the right of the persons that created this controversy. I respect the right for them to have their own opinion. But that opinion does not need to be forced down the majority of people's throat. And if anything, I think that this is going to help the city. If we do it right, it's going to help the city and the community to ensure that we come together as a united front. And I think that we need to keep that in mind, and I appreciate your time and thank you for allowing us to speak tonight.
My name's Mark Campbell, 3655 Chelmsford, May. I am California. I was going to thank the man for his courage for standing up here. But I did want to know, I know Mike and Chuck. I've grown with Mike since I was from birth. And for them to be accused of being a bully or sexist or racist, I just want to know where that came from. But Mike's not here to be able to talk for himself. I respect his opinion of that, but just to say them things, are they talking about them or other things? And I've lived in this community a long time, and I'm sure you're going to hear from other people that they don't feel that way. And this is a time that we do need to come together, where we can have different thoughts. And maybe I wanted the man to know that I admire him standing up, but I do want to know where this is coming from, and what would they like from it? I feel like they're being attacked, and it just needs to be squashed. And that's all I can say.
Hi, my name is Skip Riley, 3290 Dry Creek Road in Comanche, Ione. This woman called the news media and started a firestorm. I'm a fifth-generation Ione. I've been here forever, I guess. And her calling this her town, and she doesn't like us doing that to her town. I've got news for her. This is not her town. This is our town.
Please step to the board. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicolette Tullery, 6711 Tonzi Road. I wasn't planning on speaking, but he brought up some things about children seeing the parade. That kind of, it got me, because it is your job as a parent, if your children see something, to tell them, hey, like, you know, I don't agree with that, or this is right, this is wrong. But in this world, children are going to see everything. It's your job as a parent, don't do it if you can't tell your kid, these are not our morals, this is not what I believe, I don't think that this is right. But they have to be exposed to it. You can't just put it in a corner and shut it down. I was raised here, my dad was raised here, his dad was raised here. You know, because Obama was a president, that is what that was after. It's not because of the color of his skin. It's not because Hillary Clinton is a woman. People need to look at it as they are political figures, and that is what they are being seen as. They were handcuffed together. Slavery thing, or whatever it is. It's completely out of control. If you don't want your kids to see something, don't take them to the parade. If you don't, your kids don't like what they saw, they're confused by it, explain that to them, because that's what being a parent is. This entire world is filled with so many different things, that this is nothing. It's absolutely nothing. And you turn on the TV, you look on Facebook, you look on anything, Trump is being slammed 400 times worse than those two did. You go to San Francisco for a parade, you're going to be seeing men in like, you know, BDSM suits and everything else, whatever the hell it is. You know, people don't care, but because it's Amador County, and because it's about Trump, and because it's all of that, everyone's fired up. And honestly, I'm just kind of sick of it, and I know that the rest of these people are too. Thank you guys for your time today, and thank you everyone for supporting. And I can say one thing, the Bonham brothers have been heroes of my childhood. Every people, every person in this county knows that. And if you want to attack them, you're going to get this response. So, thank you for that.
Any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Andrew Wannam. 3 Preston Avenue. I didn't know if I was going to speak tonight. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I do appreciate both sides of the story. I do appreciate the gentleman that came here. I was hoping Amber and maybe Marta would be here, and the others that I saw that were posted and so offended. The one thing that I did really want to comment about is, I believe this grew because of Facebook, and people were so ugly on Facebook, and they were so ugly to each other, both sides. Neither side was innocent. And they were so ugly about our town and our county. I love my town. I grew up in Amador County. I, my uncle Chuck, who I adore, which I don't even know where he went, I even told him, his stuff, it's like, not my brand of humor. He's like, okay, I mean, it's a non-issue. It's like, if I'm offended by it, okay, I'm offended by it. It's not my brand of humor, but I would love the whole world to think like me. And until they do, they're never going to, I'll just do my best to try to understand their way. I know them, I know their heart. I don't believe they're racist. I don't believe they're sexist. We have, he's got a good heart. I just can't believe the inaccuracies that were being portrayed without even knowing someone. And I'm actually kind of amazed at the creativity that people came up with, saying, well, they have whole stories behind how this is, you know, really conspiracy to get into the parade, and it was, now the posters racist, that was done by a fifth grader, and this has all this deeper meaning when it's like, it was a satire political. But I understand, I'm not, I'm not mad at them for thinking that. I would love to talk to them and discuss it, and why I don't think, you know, but everybody yelling at each other, and everybody talking bad about our town, and talking bad about our county, isn't going to help anything. And I have one final thing to say. And I have one final thing to say, this is how it should work. So years ago, I went to the polling out at Howard Park and the most socialist person I know, the most liberal person I know that Walt taught us, that we all probably know who I'm talking about, is working the polls. And in comes the most conservative person I know. And Gonzo looks up and goes, oh, man, I was hoping you weren't going to make it today. That'd be one vote I didn't have to worry about. And she looks at him and goes, well, I had to show up to cancel out your vote. They laugh, they hug, and it's like, that's what it should be. You should have a opinion, you should have a thought and be still going on.
Is there any other public comment on the parade?
Debbie Mackey, 406 South Church Street. I wasn't born in Ione, I married into Ione. Thank you. And I'm extremely happy and I wish I would have been born and raised here. I know the Bonham family, they have taken in more people, given people more jobs and would never turn anybody away to see them called racist. Misogynistic was really hard to read and part of what brought me down here. But I want to keep it simple and sweet and I'm asking you as a council, please don't put restrictions on our parade, it's part of our freedom. And I know that you're going to want to possibly look at making sure that all our entries, well, I think the fire department in my time has only put in one entry, but we've always led the parade. So hopefully you won't make those requirements and put restrictions on what can be in the parade and what cannot, because that would be against our freedom, something that a lot of our families have fought for. Thank you.
Hi, thank you to those who let me come ahead because I've got to get back to a performance that my son is doing. I'm not an Ione resident and the, actually the only reason--
Could you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bronwyn Hogan. And I actually wanted to read a letter that I have submitted. And I want to say that I totally agree with people who are saying that, you know, that the folks involved in the entry do a lot for the community. There is no doubt about that. And there's no doubt in my mind about their heart and what they do for the community. There's absolutely no doubt about that. So I want to preface reading my letter with that. So here's my letter that I wrote. Sorry, I couldn't remember. I wish you had attended, so this is actually to Supervisor Richard Forster, Charles Bonham and Mike Clark, and I don't know the name of the third person who was in the entry. I wish you had attended the special session at the Amador County School Board meeting tonight, which was last night, May 15th, and heard about the bullying, racial slurs, sexual harassment and other forms of harassment that have been experienced by kids of all ages in our schools. Maybe then Supervisor Forster wouldn't have been so quick to shrug off the effect of the misogynistic and racist entry in the Ione Homecoming Parade. Again, and I don't think it was intended in that way. I absolutely, I, I don't actually think it was. Perhaps other people do, but I don't think it was. But that's the way it came across. In the Ione Homecoming Parade, as political humor, maybe if Mr. Bonham, Mr. Clark and the third man in the parade skit had been at the forum to hear the stories of kids and families who have been and are still being affected by an atmosphere of bullying and harassment over being a different race, having a different religion, having different sexual orientation, or simply being female, they would have reconsidered their choice of costumes. If the Trump character had been wearing a Speedo and walking alongside the Clinton and Obama characters, then this would have been a piece of even-handed political skewering. And there's, but the idea that, that all of you--
Please let the speaker speak.
--mature adults are, did not consider our nation's history and truly do not see how offensive it is to try to get laughs by portraying a fully dressed white man carrying a gun and with a dog on a leash, walking behind two more scantily clad women characters as though they are under his control, is kind of mind-boggling. So, but I will give, I will give folks the benefit of the doubt because again, I know that these, that all of these people do a lot for our community. But I, I'm really surprised that you would not have considered how this might have affected people. And again, I wish that you guys, I don't know if you're in the room because I, but I wish you had been at that forum last night to hear the stories of what has happened and is still in some cases going on. So because of that, I hope that you will consider the ways that this quote joke, unquote, contributes to the proliferation of an atmosphere that allows adults to say, boys will be boys, when they say sexually inappropriate things to their female junior high and high school classmates, or condone harassment of LGBT students. That allows antisemitic remarks to be shrugged off as par for the course by school administration in some cases, not all by any means. And that lets people ignore or simply not notice what kids are saying to their classmates of color.
Please, would you let the speaker speak?
For example, that this is a white county. I have seen and heard people, mostly men, but sometimes women roll their eyes and try to stop people from saying, when they talk about these things, having an impact and being insensitive. I hope that you will read the transcript from the meeting, the school board session, and consider the pain that kids in our schools have experienced recently and how the parade performance does rub salt in those kinds of wounds by giving approval to unacceptable behavior and attitudes. And please, if, if you and all of us, this includes me, includes all of us, do nothing else that comes out of this, this whole event, is that we need to be more thoughtful of our words and actions, because that way, we can make Amador County the county we know it should be and can be, which is one where all people, all people, no matter their gender, color, religion or political views, feel welcome. And unfortunately, that is not, I feel, I, I am one of the people who does not see that. I am not affected by racist comments or antisemitic comments. And I'm just asking people to realize that this does happen. It happens and people are out there and not feeling comfortable saying it because people make comments when they speak up. Thank you, and I'm going to go to my sense of--
Thank you very much for your comment. Please keep it, please keep it orderly. Please, let the speaker speak. You've all had your chance, everyone's entitled to their opinion. Please let them speak without interruption. Thank you very much. Go ahead, please state your name.
Hello, I'm Joshua Johnson. I currently don't, I live in this county, but I've been here for about six, seven years and you guys are the county that family should be around. I will say that I, I love this county. Everywhere I walk, I feel like this is a home. This is a community I can trust, this is a community that I can be in, and I love every last one of you guys. I have, I have not walked around and no one has ever racially discriminated me. I just want to tell you guys I'm black. That's what people say all the time. I'm like, no, I'm not Asian or anything. But, oh man, this whole thing has blown up.
Yeah.
I know you guys can agree with that. What we do in our parade, it's, it's freedom of speech and some people don't understand that. Some people, some people want to take other people's rights away to speak, but when they have something to say about it, they carry over our voice. Like they carry their words over our voice and their opinion over our opinion or fact in place. But again, like the lady said before, don't take that away from our parade. Don't take that away from our traditions. This is, this county has a heart for people. This county has a heart for people, people of color, people of different religions, people of different backgrounds, even people of different sex orientation.
Yeah.
We don't discriminate, we love. And we just want to keep on loving and loving and loving. So please do not change.
My name is Tracy Keith Clark, Mike Clark's wife. He's not able to, I want to talk to kind of the whole community here. Kind of pisses me off when I hear stuff said about my husband. He is not racist, he is not political. He says things that may not always be politically correct. Anybody that knows him knows that. He is not against women. I mean, we have our arguments and if anybody knows my husband, they know that the women he's dealt with in his life are the most hard-headed ones, including me, who I'm paying to deal with and we keep each other in check. I don't feel like I should have to defend our characters, but I'm going to. One of my best friends is gay and he comes over to my house all the time. It pisses me off. My husband doesn't like to go to the movies and stuff like that, so he'll call me, tell me, call up your, call up Mike, he calls him my gay boyfriend. And I don't need to out him or anything, but he is welcoming into our house. We have all different minorities and that's the last I'm going to defend on that. But I will tell you right now, my husband and the Bonhams have been a pillar to this community.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't know that they have donated their time, their money, heavy equipment, that fields out in those fields. Who do you think helped build those? My husband, Mike Clark, who people are calling all these things, was one of the people that has put his heart and soul into this community. He helped build that stuff, but he doesn't take credit for it. He's not in the front newspaper like maybe some of these people trying to rag about this stuff. He doesn't want the credit. He wants the good for the kids. He helped, he's coached for years and years. People still come up to him, little kids that are adults now come up and love him and hug him and say, thank you so much. And another thing I'm offended by, I saw on the internet that they were passing out panties. Where did that come from? Yes, it was all over the internet that they were throwing out panties.
It was Rachel's, clothing line's face.
Okay, I'm just telling you right now, my husband was not throwing out panties. I would not pay for them and I know better than that. And some people were saying he was naked. He was not naked. He was wearing full-on shorts underneath his outfit. I was kind of teasing him. I'm all, you should have wore just your boxers underneath there. And he's all, whoa, whoa. I mean, I knew he wouldn't do that. But the point of this is, people are saying stuff about it. If you're going to criticize people for things, get to know your audience. If you want to be an Ione, figure out who you're criticizing. Because I guarantee you, we're not going to welcome you here. If you want to criticize people that help this community so much, figure them out. Come get to know them. They have the right to say stuff against them. You know, it's their right. We all have our freedom of speech. They have their right to do that stuff. We have the right to do our stuff. But do it in an appropriate manner and don't make up lies like the bullet hole. I'm like, my God, come on, people. It wasn't a gun. That may have been a little bit over the line, I admit. That was, and I'm, but, and I apologize, it was not a shotgun, it was not a rifle, it was not a sword. Those are the three things, it was a pellet gun. And I heard that he was pointing them out in the audience, they were not pointing them out in the audience, I was behind them the whole way. So let's, if you don't like it, and I'm sorry, and I really do apologize to people that were offended, I mean, there are 17% that were, and I do apologize, but I will not, I will not apologize for us going through this parade. I have been doing it with the Bonhams for 20 years probably, probably 10 years before I was even with Mike. His family has been great to my family. My family's been here for hundreds of years. I don't know how many years, that may be exact, hell, we have a street named after us. I'm curious, of course, what you're selling. But my point is, before you criticize my family, my family, get to know who they are and say the right things. Come and talk to us. Hell, you can come 4,000 hit a mesa if anybody wants to come talk to us, but now I'm kind of thinking, God, they're making us sound like racist and everything. I'm kind of nervous. My husband is a volunteer with the Native Sense, he was nominated to represent Ione. He's not here because he's in Monterey and they're in one vehicle.
Grand Parlor.
Grand Parlor, correct. He is representing the Native Sense, he was voted by his group because of all of the things he does. He folks, I mean, he, we've met so many events because he wants to volunteer to raise money for kids, doing all kinds of things with the Native Sense. But nobody's recognizing that. They're saying he's a whatever. And I just really want to make sure that the people of Ione know that my husband and my family are not like that. Sure, they're not always politically correct and they say things to make people angry. I mean, I know that. But don't say that he's throwing out panties, don't say there was a bullet hole in Hillary's face. And if you have something to say, he's upset, he's not here tonight. And, you know, oh, that was another thing, they said that they were hiding behind their mask. Anybody knows it, who they are. They have not put their name down for years. I mean, they have jumped in so many times without putting their names down and people know who they are. They don't even have to know that. And about the kids being offended, oh my God. My niece and nephew, seven to nine years old, they laughed, Uncle Mike's dressed up as Obama. And they laughed. They didn't, they were laughing and I, I do apologize if people do, were offended by it, but I will not apologize for my family going through the parade. And please, don't stop us from doing this. Thank you. I, I don't want to talk about the parade, I want us to talk about what just happened. That woman came in here and talked, we're talking freedom of speech. And you treated her like shit before she went out this door.
Thank you for that comment. And I want to tell you that the people here are obviously in the majority supporting the parade, but everybody's got a right to speak and if you don't agree with them, then you don't agree with them. But please, treat them with respect. So if there's any other speakers on the parade, public comment, please step up.
Sorry for my, my--
No, I appreciate that comment.
I would like to say that the incident of supposed, or bullying that I'm aware of happened at Ione Elementary School on Friday. The parade was on Saturday.
Yeah.
The meeting was on Monday. So I don't see the relevance of why, for some reason, the Ione Homecoming Parade is responsible for bullying in school.
The day before.
Yeah.
Any other public comment on the parade?
Brandon McMahon, 301 Broadway. I've been an Ione for about 18 years, which I'm 18, so my family's been here before that. And homecoming has been a part of everything that my family and this community stands for. And if someone wants to take it away after 141 years, if I'm correct, right? I think that's crazy, but that's my perspective and I think everyone else sitting here believes that it's crazy that someone wants to take it away. And on to the bullying. I go to Argonaut High School, we're all friends, we actually like, we're family. I haven't seen bullying, like, I mean, we had a conversation, I'm in student government. We had a conversation today about the bullying issues and we just think it's blown out of proportion. Like, we even, we have Trillie at our school and we include them in everything that we do. We include them in our rallies, we include them in our games. And I think it's blown out of proportion to say that there's bullying even going around at local schools. Yeah, so, don't get rid of homecoming.
Any other public comment on the parade? Can you see it none? Just want to let you know that this is the public comment section and no one has asked us to ban the parade or do anything with the parade. This is where we receive the comments that we've received. So that, that has never been an issue. I don't do Facebook either, so I'm not 100% on what everything that's been going around and being said. But if there is no more public comment on, on the parade, how about if there's people that would like to stay, you're welcome to stay, but if you want, I'm going to take like a three-minute break here just in case there's people that don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you can at this time leave. But thank you very much for--
Take the shot of how everyone's leaving.